We have Senator Champagne as well, Rep. Gupiel and Rep. Rojas, Senator McCrory, and Senator Austin, who's actually at the top right there. So I let me begin by turning it over to you, Senator Casano, to see if you have any opening remarks.
No, I'm looking forward to getting an update and keeping things moving.
Thank you, Senator Casano. Rep. Sol, I'll give you a chance to make any comments if you'd like.
Just good morning, Madam Chair. You know, I actually just received my official appointment letter about 10 minutes ago. So I had certainly done some homework in anticipation of that, but it was good to be here officially and eager to hear what everybody has to say. So thank you very much.
It's good to have you on.
Yes, welcome, welcome, Rep. Sol. I think actually Rep. Gupiel may have you be. I think hers came in a few minutes after yours. So we are very fortunate to be joined today by the folks from OPM. I will just preface today by saying we're behind with the Plan of Conservation and Development. As the letter to Senator Casano, myself, and the members of the Continuing Legislative Committee on State Planning and Development indicated, this is the fourth time that OPM has submitted the plan to the legislature. And I'll just kind of do a brief review and I may have a little bit of repetition of this from our folks at OPM. As the chair for the past two years, I can speak to 2019. We had a resolution raised, but that was not transmitted to the entire General Assembly. And then, of course, in 2020, our session was cut short. I don't have the experience of the prior year, but nonetheless, it will mean that we'll have a few conversations about our timeline and timing. But with that, today, we do have OPM here with us, and I'm going to introduce Martin Heft to introduce your team here with you today. Martin, thank you for being with us.
Thank you very much. Martin Heft, Acting Under Secretary, Office of Policy and Management, Intergovernmental Policy and Planning Division. I joke and say that you need a fold-out business card to fit all that on, you know? But thank you, thank you very much, senators, representatives, you know, and as members of the Continuing Committee. First, thank you for convening the public hearing on the draft Conservation and Development Policies, the Plan for Connecticut 2018 to 2023, which will be known as the Draft C and D Plan. As has been mentioned, this is the fourth consecutive year that the Office of Policy and Management has submitted the draft State C and D Plan for the General Assembly's consideration of adoption. We have been before the Continuing Committee with the Draft C and D Plan in 2018, 2019, and 2020 legislative sessions. 2018, House Joint Resolution Number 172 was not acted upon by the General Assembly. In 2019, House Joint Resolution Number 74 was raised, but not transmitted to the General Assembly. Last year, as Representative has mentioned, a public hearing was held, but no action was taken as we entered into the COVID pandemic period. We are respectfully asking for your support again this fourth time, as well as your assistance and backing to move the Draft C and D Plan through the House and the Senate. Additionally, OPM recommends the resetting the time covered by the Draft C and D Plan be made to 2021 to 2026. Without knowledge of how the changes of the newly adopted plan affect its implementation, it will be difficult to develop a basis for a new plan. By making no change, the process for the next five-year plan, 2023 to 2028, will begin in the fall of this year. My staff, who's with me today, Dan Morley, Eric Lindquist, Matt Pafford, and Bruce Witchen, are all here to assist the Continuing Committee and the members of the General Assembly in the coming week so that you can fulfill your responsibilities under Connecticut State Statute Section 16A-30. I would now like to turn it over to Dan Morley and the team to review the Draft C and D Plan. And obviously, we'll all be here for any, you know, questions and follow-up after the presentation.
Thank you very much, Martin, and good morning, or good afternoon, actually, Senator Casano and Representative McCarthy Veyhe and other members of the Continuing Committee. My name is Dan Morley, and I am the Assistant Director in the Intergovernmental Policy and Planning Division of the Office of Policy and Management. Today, we're going to give a fairly short presentation. Not sure if we can get that loaded up here, but I want to be respectful of the new members here who may not have heard this previously, so I will try to keep it a little slower and give a little historical background, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have along the way. So, um, thank you. May I have the next slide, please? So, the state plan is, it's exactly that. It's developed by the Office of Policy and Management, and it's implemented by state agencies, but it's approved by the legislature. So technically, it's the legislature's plan. OPM staff, as Martin indicated in his opening remarks, we basically are here to serve as your staff to develop the plan that you see fit for the General Assembly's consideration of approval. So the statutes require OPM to go through a comprehensive bottom-up process in developing this plan. So as you can see on the different bubbles here, we do take early input from municipalities and the regional councils of governments. And in fact, the regional COGS are very helpful in coordinating a lot of that public outreach so that we not only get municipal, appropriate municipal officials, but members of the public, as well as interested members of the public who want to provide input into the process so they can be there at local meetings that we have along the way. So as part of that process, we also have to interact with our sister state agencies. As I mentioned, it's, the plan is actually implemented by state agencies, so they all have a vested interest in what the policies of the state are with regard to implementing their own plans and programs. So the Continuing Committee's role is really vital to all this. The Continuing Committee is established in statute, I believe it's 4-60D. And basically, the role of the committee is to guide OPM through this process, basically to set the parameters by which we should operate. And ultimately, they, the committee has to make its recommendation to the General Assembly, which is why we come before you today to testify at this public hearing, which is required. And then, following this hearing, my staff and I are able to help assist with any amendments you might want to make to further revise the plan before you feel comfortable in making a recommendation to the General Assembly for possible adoption. Next slide, please. So this kind of gives a background as to how we got to where we are today. And these dates here basically reflect what is already shown in statute. So the statutory guidance to OPM basically as to how we go about developing the plan for your consideration. So back in September of 2016, and again, you can consider this, we do this every five years typically after adoption. So a couple of years before we go to adoption, so in 2016, we were preparing the 2018 plan, we began by coming before the committee with a draft plan by highlighting what we believe were some of the pertinent issues at that time. And then, the committee provided, was provided a 90-day period to provide us any feedback, and that basically set OPM off on its public process. And the next milestone there was in May of 2017, which is when we published a second version, the second draft, basically, updating any input that we received from both the Continuing Committee as well as members of the public through various regional meetings that we had with the public. And that document then became the basis for the formal public review period, which was a five-month period. And OPM went out to each of the nine regions of the state and conducted public hearings to, again, take, to be informed as to what other issues were lying out there that maybe we hadn't anticipated previously. So then, OPM used the next several months up until early December to submit a, basically, the third edition of the draft plan, which is effectively what you have, what you have before you today. And that revision takes into account responses to the formal public hearings, which we have posted on our website. And following that in 20, after submitting it in December 2017, you went through a similar process such as what you're going through now. A public hearing was held by the committee, and then there was consideration of it, but as Representative McCarthy Veyhe indicated, for various reasons in each of those years, the plan was not adopted by the General Assembly. Next slide, please. So that was basically the background on the legislative process by which OPM is meant to develop the plan. Where the rubber hits the road is how does the plan get implemented? And that, too, is addressed in State Statute 16A-31A, says that every state agency, whenever they undertake certain actions or use grants to fund the various things such as acquisition of real property, development or improvement of real property, or acquisition of public transportation equipment or facilities, anytime they're expending funds in excess of $200,000, they have to, it's a mandatory requirement that they are determined that the project that they are undertaking is consistent with the state policies as outlined in this plan. Next slide, please. So that was the core requirement on state agencies for consistency. And again, it's, the onus is on the state agencies to do that. However, these next citations here allow agencies, first off, to request an advisory statement from OPM whenever they are looking for determination on their actions. OPM will give a finding whenever requested. Secondly, whenever the State Bond Commission meets prior to that, OPM staff review the Bond Commission agenda and provide an advisory statement through this secretary as to the extent to which those items are consistent with the state plan. And finally, in Section 16A-31E, there's a requirement that each state agency, whenever they undertake plans under their purview that are required by statute, either by state or federal law, they also have to be determined to be generally consistent with the State C and D Plan. So they'll make a referral to OPM staff to review those plans. And there are quite a few of them. I believe in Attachment A that we have provided with our documents. You can see the 20-plus or so state agency plans that are reviewed, and they run the gamut as far as topical nature of those plans. Next slide, please. So the revisions in 2018, 2023 are actually quite modest. The big lift was really done in the 2013, 2018 plan, the pre, the one that we currently are operating under. That actually had certain statutory requirements that required a significant change in both the, the, the format of the plan as well as its implementation. And we'll get into that as this, as this presentation proceeds. So each chapter of the plan is presented through what's called the Growth Management Principle, and there are six of them. And they basically deal with broad topical areas such as dealing with revitalizing our regional centers and making best use of the existing infrastructure, making sure that we have fair and affordable housing in the appropriate places, making sure that we're taking advantage of our transportation network so that the land use that drives it is done in a efficient manner. We're looking at the environmental resources and making sure that the land use impacts from how we manage those resources are done in a practical manner, as well as other environmental assets that are critical to public health and safety, making sure that our watershed lands are appropriately protected and so forth. And finally, the Six Growth Principles deals with how do we integrate all that between the different levels of government at the state, regional, and municipal levels? So there's statements of policy that fall under each one of those Growth Management Principles, but as I indicated from the outset, the changes this time around were relatively modest out of the 67 total principles, or policies, I should say, that are in the plan. We only had revisions to 14 of them, and only two of them were new. And they're cited there. I believe it deals with infill development on the first, and the second one deals with open space issues. But again, nothing of a significant change this time around. We did update the various appendices and attachments, and we tried to make a document that was more readable as far as formatting it and numbering the policies so that we could do better comparisons when we provide your annual reports in the future and do future updates to this plan. And finally, we tried to freshen up the graphics and the visual design. So again, bottom line is that this revision, 2018 to 2023, is not significantly different than what was, what we're currently operating under. Next slide, please. Now, what has changed, and Eric is going to get into this, Eric Lindquist, when I pass this off to him, the locational guide map has always served a function in the State Plan of Conservation and Development. And in 2013, when new statutory requirements took effect, specifically growth-related, I'm sorry, priority funding areas is the section of statute which follows the State C and D Plan. So it's Chapter 297A. And that put a new twist on how the locational guide map is used. So again, it gets back to the issue of how do state agencies implement? And a key role here, and in the bold print at the bottom here, the Continuing Committee realized in 2013 that the map could sometimes be a cause of numerous concerns, whether it be at the municipal level or private development level. And the statement came from their endorsement letter, says that "The locational guide map shall not be used by itself to determine consistency with the written policies of the state plan." The key point there is that you can't get the carpe for the horse here. When an agency is determining consistency of the state plan, it's the written policies that drive that conversation. The map issue is really the secondary concern, and we're going to explain how the map is applied. So the map only relates to what's called growth-related projects, which is a fairly convoluted definition provided in statute. But nonetheless, it's basically what it says is that it doesn't include such type of state agency actions that would be improving the environmental condition per se, but growth-related, meaning that it would deal with whether it be physical infrastructure, facilities, and so forth, sort of the, the things that you can see and touch. Next slide, please. So the interesting thing here is that in the statute, there's very strong language that says that any growth-related project that's funded outside of a priority funding area, and again, remember I said that the map takes the secondary priority after the policies? So if an agency has undertaken a project and it is consistent with the written state policies but falls outside of a priority funding area, there is an exception process provided in statute. And for longtime members of this committee, they might recall that there was what was called an interim change process, which would put the committee really in the crosshairs of having to decide between a, potentially a private development activity that was potentially being assisted with state funding, and whether that was, in fact, going to be consistent. What, what this has done, this legislative change of, for, for priority funding areas, is it took really the onus off of the Continuing Committee and put it on the Municipal Plan of Conservation and Development, which we had all agreed at that time was the appropriate way that there should be a way for state agencies to be able to get where the rubber hits the road, to make a determination of consistency if there was conformity, not just with state policies, but to make sure that the municipality being affected was also supportive through its own POCD. So is it, the bullets mentioned here, it ensures that there's local support for projects outside of PFAs. It reduces the need for these interim changes that I mentioned. And then, it also encourages municipalities to stay on top of their POCD because municipalities are required to revise theirs once every 10 years, but it can be more often than that. So I think that what this does by having state agencies required to be consistent with implementing the plan this way, it also puts municipalities on the, on the seat really to make sure that their plan is as robust as possible, to make sure that they're properly informing those agencies as to how they want development to occur in their towns. Next slide, please. So the exception process, so even though the language is strong, saying that "An agency shall not fund a growth-related project outside of a priority funding area," the exception is that, you know, as I said, that first off, that the project has to be deemed consistent with the written state policies, and then the local POCD has to also be supportive. There are these nine criteria that are listed here. I don't, I won't go through each one, but basically, what it's saying is that there's numerous reasons why an exception can be made. So that provides much leeway to an agency and ultimately to OPM, because OPM is the agency that has to approve any exception where a project is not in a priority funding area. So again, this is trying to improve the integration of planning at both the local and state level and has opportunity for regional input as well. So we feel that the existing statute has what we need to operate. I think it did resolve the concern that the committee had previously about being in the uncomfortable position of having to deal with interim changes because it was solely looked at to resolve the issue. And this way, it's more of a interactive process, ultimately with OPM approval as the overseer of how the plan is implemented. And with that, let's see, next slide, please. Yeah, so I'm going to hand it off to Eric Lindquist at this time, and then we'll come back and summarize when he's done with his presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morley. Mr. Lindquist, it's wonderful to have you here as well.
Thank you, Representative, and thank you all for attending. Again, for the record, my name is Eric Lindquist. I'm an environmental analyst at OPM, and I'm just going to talk more about the technical aspects of the locational guide map and priority funding areas. And so, as Dan mentioned, what a priority funding area is, is defined in statute, but how it's defined or how it's drawn, the boundaries of them are not defined. Section 16A-35C asks OPM to recommend how to delineate boundaries of priority funding areas. In other words, where, where they should be and where they should not be. It asks us to do that in consultation with numerous state agencies, COGS, municipalities, and others, as the secretary sees fit. And so, 2013, the 2013 to 2018 plan was really the first time we saw, we delineated priority funding areas. And back then, it was recommended by OPM that census blocks, which are the smallest geographical units that the Census Bureau uses to provide population and demographic statistics, would be, would be a good candidate to determine, at least at a broad scale, what priority funding areas should be, and then work under a cross-acceptance process with municipalities and other entities, entities to sort of refine the lines, if you will. And I just want to make note that although we're recommending again in this iteration that we continue with census blocks as the defining boundaries for PFAs, they can be mapped any way, almost any way you see fit. They can be, they can follow other pre-existing geographical units such as parcel boundaries. You could use raster data to delineate, which is, for example, aerial imagery, but in this example, high resolution land cover to help delineate them, or you could simply draw them, customize them yourselves, draw them in any way you see fit using GIS mapping applications. So it's important to understand that although OPM is recommending the use of a particular geographic unit, that is not what's in statute. It is, it is open to interpretation in terms of what, how a priority funding area should be drawn. And last, last bullets on this slide, in our outreach process and for the 2018 to 2023 C and D Plan, we saw a wide range of municipal officials' opinions on this from municipal officials, some of them believing that the priority funding areas as they're drawn are far too broad, believe that, you know, that they are, they should be narrowed down. Others believe that they need to be as broad as possible because they, in their mind, they believe that without having priority funding areas in their town, they're not going to have as many opportunities for state funding, which isn't necessarily true, as Dan provided the details on the exception process in the previous slides. And so throughout this, throughout our experience in, from implementation of the 2013 to 2018 plan and in preparation of the current revision, we found, OPM found that priority funding area boundaries may be more useful if they're a little bit more constricted, and so we have a recommendation to do that, which I'll get to soon.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I came on a little late.
Senator McCrory, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I came on early before you guys got started, I left, and now I'm back. Can you define what a priority funding area is? And the reason why I'm asking, I know, I heard that a lot of this work started between 2013 and 2018, and you were working under a different OPM secretary. And I'm not quite sure if what you guys are doing, the work you guys are doing is consistent in what the new administration is doing. But first of all, can you define what a priority funding area is and what are the benefits of a priority funding area? If you ever, if you haven't got to that stage yet, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Senator McCrory. I can do it, or it was, Dan Morley had just covered it on some of the previous slides that he presented probably right before you joined. And so, Dan, is that something you want to go back to real quick, or should we maybe come back to that?
If you can give me a two-minute overview, everything else will fall in line for me.
Sure.
Yes, Eric, if I may, just for a second, if, whether you or Mr. Morley wants to, rather than, you know, reviewing each of the slides, just in a few, like Senator McCrory saying, a few sentences.
Right.
Right.
Summarize, and, and just actually a logistical question, we'll make sure that the slide deck, I'm assuming that we can make sure that the slide deck is available.
Okay.
The members of the committee, too, so that people have it.
Senator McCrory, if I, if I may, you asked a very good question. There is actually not a definition in statute for priority funding area, other than to say that the boundaries of such areas will be arrived at by work between OPM and the Continuing Committee. So Mr. Lindquist just got done explaining that very issue, and so I think your main point, though, is even though we don't have a definition for priority funding area to work with, what we do have is, I believe, the legislative intent here, which is how are they used? So what we try to do is use the boundaries of priority funding areas to indicate through the criteria that Eric is about to go through, to delineate boundaries that provide the most, you know, efficient way to use past existing state investments in infrastructure and to make sure that we're accommodating land use patterns that are efficient from a state funding standpoint, so that we're not accommodating the type of growth that will beget more requirements for state subsidy and so forth. So I think that's the basic intent of why we have priority funding areas, even though they're not well-defined. That is the intent, and I might also add that we're not thrilled with the terminology because I think the term priority funding area sets a very meaningful bar. And unfortunately, the way And unfortunately, the way that it's utilized is really more in an administrative manner. So um, I think that's a discussion for, I think, the committee and O P M to have at some point. Um, but we're sort of, we feel that we're sort of um tied. Uh, our hands are tied on this because um statute says one thing and it names, you know, them priority funding areas. But at the end of the day, we're not necessarily able to attach state policies as to what those policy priorities are at this time to guide funding. It's really a
I'm so confused. Okay, keep going. I I am, okay. I'm I'm thought I was crazy, but I'm not.
Yeah.
No, Senator McCrory, and I, just a couple to back up just for a second. I should have started at the beginning. Like our other hearings, um, I would ask everyone to avoid using the chat. Um, I will just note that we did have one comment that there's on in page twenty-five of the plan. Um, that you can find some more written detail. And also, I see Mr. Majority Leader is using the raise hand function. So I will ask folks to raise hand because we're sharing screen. It's hard to see everyone. So I'm going to go next to our esteemed Majority Leader, Representative Rojas.
I was gonna apologize in the chat for using the chat, but then I didn't want to double offend. So I'm apologizing now for using the chat. Uh, but no, I just wanted to get to Senator McCrory's question too. I mean, kind of broadly defined, right? They're trying to direct investments into areas that already have infrastructure to support development rather than investing in more infrastructure outside of broadly speaking, are already kind of developed areas or areas that have significant infrastructure. Um, you know, my comments now, I will just say, are not a reflection on O P M or the staff there. I think they're operating with statutes that really don't allow the plan of conservation and development to really have any kind of teeth. Um, you know, the the exception, the exception processes are so broad that generally no state agency actually has to follow the provisions that are called for state agencies to follow because the the exceptions are so broad that it really makes this plan uh, the plan itself kind of, you know, it's 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 certainly a good policy to develop these plans. But in terms of enforceability, I don't know that there is an enforceability mechanism on this, like who enforces the plan itself? It doesn't call for local plans or regional plans to be consistent with the statewide plan. So obviously, there's differences between local plans, regional plans, and of course, the state plan of conservation and development. But the big picture is here is, you know, we really need to look at the state statutes because all the folks at O P M are operating within the statutes that they are allowed to operate under. I mean, there's just so many weaknesses, I think, within the statutes that we end up with a policy here that doesn't really result in anything because I know we're not focusing funding, uh, critical funding investments in the key areas where we want it to happen. It's, you know, basically allows, you know, whoever's right, regardless of who the current secretary is. It allows any secretary to kind of put bonding and investments wherever they want to put it for the most part. So um, you know, I've been sort of critical of this process in the past. I'll continue to be critical about it um going forward, um, so long as the legislature doesn't do anything, uh, do anything to change it. Again, not a reflection of the staff at O P M who are producing this work.
That explains a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And uh, as the former uh Chair and Leader of this committee and a longtime member and previous member of Planning and Development, Rep. Rojas is a tremendous resource and perspective. I would underscore what is newer to this process than Rep. Rojas, our Majority Leader, the the same comments that this certainly is a worthy conversation separate and apart from this process itself related to the statutes. And I think one that I suspect that we will engage in in the years to come. But I'm going to turn it back now to Mr. Lindquist.
Sorry there, I was getting, trying to get off of mute. Um, thank you for those comments. Those were um much appreciated. Uh, and hopefully we have a better understanding now of where where we lie with priority funding areas. And now I cannot seem to get my presentation slides to advance. There they go. So I'm just going to, so I think I'm pretty much done with this slide. I'm gonna, I was just about to move on to the next slide here. Which shows exactly how O P M is recommending we sort of narrow down those broadly defined priority funding areas for this coming plan iteration here. In the twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen plan, any census block, and I'm gonna explain in a little bit, the the slides to come are gonna sort of give you the the high level overview of, you know, some pictures to go along with with all these, all this text. But when you think of a census block, which can be, you know, several square miles or just, you know, a fraction of an acre. If it contains any one or more of these five listed criteria here, uh, it is defined as a priority funding area. Um, that's the twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen plan. Under the recommended twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three plan, O P M is recommending that we increase that to two or more criteria, meaning you need to have two or more of these criteria present, existing physically within a census block uh in order for that to be designated as a priority funding area. Uh, and I don't need to read them out. They're there listed, but it's basically urban areas, water and sewer, uh, local bus and transit oriented criteria. Here's an example of what census blocks actually look like. Uh, they're irregular. They do tend to follow municipal boundaries. They do tend to follow roads, uh, waterways, other um either manmade or natural boundary lines. But they can also be very irregular outside of that. And so over down here in the bot, this is uh, Middletown in Portland uh with the Connecticut River flowing through. You can see in downtown Middletown uh and where we have some subdivisions and neighborhoods in Middletown, we see uh little teeny islands. Uh, these are all census blocks. Some of them are just a neighborhood or a fraction of a neighborhood. Uh, others, as we get away from the urban areas, uh, they tend to grow in size. And so we have large census blocks where we have flood plains, agricultural lands, um, core forest areas and so forth. Um, and that's, I'll get to, um, so here, I'm gonna go back to that in a minute, but here I just want to show uh what I was explaining before. Uh, this is just, see this polygon I have drawn out here is just a sample census block uh which shows, you know, you can have just one, this is how it currently exists under the twenty thirteen, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three plan where you have just one criteria, in this case, water service that may pass through a portion of it. Any portion of it. Uh, it deems it a priority funding area under the current, under the current system. Uh, the recommended system going forward for twenty twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three would be that you have to have more than just this one water line. You'd have to have something else, either a transit transit service, or you'd have to have sewer in addition to water and so forth. But it doesn't address the size of the census block or uh what we deem balanced priority funding areas, which means balanced priority funding area simply means that there's a conservation factor that exists there in the portion of the census block that an agency, a sponsoring agency, if they're undertaking a growth related project, they need to consider that conservation factor, whatever it may be. Uh, and we'll, we'll and the next slide, I'll have another example for you. Here's, here's that, here's that example I mentioned before. This is actually in Montville. And so we look at Chesterfield Road, Chesterfield Road in Montville, and then we have a little school here and a road with a subdivision out here and some houses along it. But we actually have public water that runs along this, this road, um, Chesterfield Road. And we also have um public sewer serving the uh, the middle school here. Uh, well, look at these census blocks, these, these boundaries here uh that I think you can see my mouse pointer, but I'm outlining them. These are very, very large census blocks that are are uh mostly rural, but happen to uh fringe upon uh some developed areas. Because those areas are developed with infrastructure in place like sewer and water, um, the entirety of the census block is deemed the priority funding area. So it would appear as though to someone looking at the map or reading the plan that the state is advocating for this entire area to become developed, to to be a priority for development. And um, that's sort of the demonstration of how this works and and possibly some of the ways that uh it may not be as effective having um you know, these large areas necessarily in place and why in the future um, the continuing committee and O P M working together may want to reconsider how how those census blocks are drawn. But for the near term, O P M is recommending in this, in this next iteration of the plan to, to shrink down the priority funding areas by by increasing the amount of development criteria that need to be present in the census blocks. And I know I can, might be confusing some folks, or or some folks may be scratching their head. So please feel free um to raise your hand if um, if if I can help clarify anything here. Uh, this slide, the same, the same area just shows how the balanced priority funding areas work. Here we have core forest, a big, a big block of core forest in this priority funding area. Wherever that core forest exists, the priority funding area turns yellow to designate that it's balanced, meaning there is conservation factor there that the state agency would have to consider if it were to undertake a growth related project there. And in this block here, it's a locally important area deemed locally important for preservation by the town of Montville. So just an example on that. Here's the application with the color coding that you would see in the map. The color coding is 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 red or pink and then a yellow. And then, so the the red and the pink are priority funding areas with the yellow, uh, the um sorry, the yellow and the red, priority funding areas with the yellow being balanced, meaning conservation factors. This red box under balanced is new for twenty twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three. That's the only um change that we've recommended on how the locational guide map is actually applied. Previously, an agency would only need to document how it itself addressed concerns on any of the, any of the conservation factors that exists. Now um, it's proposed that an agency would need to re, uh, to consult with its fellow agency that has expertise in the area of concern. Um, village priority funding areas are generally designated by or requested by municipalities and then approved by O P M. Uh, we do have a, uh, sorry about that. We do have a couple of changes to village priority funding areas um with some new designations as well that are um available to view on the interactive map that um we've sent out in the attachments and on O P M's website. Um, conservation areas are shown on the map in a brown color. However, they don't really mean anything other than to provide agencies or other users of the map with general planning information that a conservation factor exists. They also happen to change priority funding areas into balanced priority funding areas, but there is no such thing as a priority conservation area uh in the current iteration of locational guide map. And then any area that has no that's not a priority funding area and also not a conservation area, it would be just undesignedated. And so in these two areas, the conservation areas and undesignedated areas, basically anything outside of P F A, um, those growth related projects can proceed with the exception process outlined in statute that Mr. Morley outlined earlier in the presentation. Here's the uh, the conservation criteria that can affect whether a P F A becomes a balanced P F A. Those are also listed around page twenty-five of the uh C and D plan, uh where the discussion of priority funding areas happens. So I'm gonna turn it back now. That's, that's the broad overview on the locational guide map, the the getting to the technical aspect of how O P M has recommended we draw and treat the priority funding areas. If there's any questions, happy to answer. I'm gonna turn it back to Dan Morley on on this slide to sort of wrap it up, wrap up our presentation.
Okay, thanks, Eric. And um
Excuse me, Mr. Morley, just for one moment. I know that, um, I know you're wrapping up, and I just want to know if the Majority Leader does have to hop off at one, and I know I want to give him a chance to make a comment. So I'm gonna let you finish up and turn it over to him.
It wasn't my goal to co-opt the whole meeting. Sorry about that. Um, no, listen, I I want to think, I did want to know, you know, despite my criticism in one comment, I did want to come back to, you know, if you look at the growth management principles, they're obviously well-developed and reflect really good policy. Um, my comment would be if only we could actually act on those articulated policies and the growth management principles. I think the state would be better off for it. Um, and, you know, not sorely the place to have a conversation around affordable housing and housing, but I do want to note that, you know, growth management principle number two does talk about expanding housing opportunities and how critical it is to the future of the state and how we, implementation of this P O C D plan, which again, I would just remind everybody is really in the best interest of the state and all our, all of our communities. So I did, I want to thank O P M for all their work. Um, I know there's another, a couple of other steps that we have to act on to get on this. You know, the challenge with this plan is that we look at it every five years, right, which um is an eternity, I think, in terms of of policy and the policy world that we live in. Um, and, you know, unfortunately, I'm afraid, you know, we'll end up adopting this plan and then have another five years um until we seek or attempt to make changes to how we uh do this. I suppose we could change statutes in the midterm. I don't know what that would mean for a plan that gets adopted. And every five years, perhaps if we made changes to statutes, it could be reflected the next time the plan comes up. Um, but again, there's a lot of really good policy uh direction in the document, but unable to be implemented in any kind of real way. So I just want to thank everybody and just wanted to share that for the folks who are new on the committee or or care to listen to anything that I might have to say. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader, and we will go back to Mr. Morley, and then I see Rep. Kupiel has her hand up after Mr. Morley.
Okay, thank you. And actually, I can um summarize this, and it, it's a great segue from uh Representative Rojas's comment. Um, really, our recommendation at this point is one of a housekeeping nature. And, you know, he mentioned that five-year period can seem like an eternity. Um, so first off, we recommend here that the timeline be changed. Um, but with a caveat. So if you did nothing at this point, if the statutes remained as they are today, O P M would begin the next C and D plan revision process this coming summer. So regardless of whether this plan was acted on or not, we would be required to start the process um this summer and have you a new plan for consideration in the twenty twenty-three session. So what we're suggesting is that you might want to consider revising the dates on this plan if you are to endorse it for the General Assembly's consideration of approval so that it would become the um twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-six plan. So in the first bullet here, that would require some amendments to the statutes sixteen A, twenty-eight and twenty-nine because those set those timeline dates that I spoke to earlier in my um discussion that there's a two-year lead process to the start of it. So if we were to um be submitting a twenty twenty-six plan, um, then we would be beginning that process in twenty twenty-four. So I can, it it's a little confusing by just looking at the dates here, but if I could walk it through with you at some point outside of this, I'd be happy to. But the main point I wanted to make here and get to Representative Rojas's comment is that there still is the ability in statute for interim changes. As I mentioned before, in the twenty thirteen change, the priority funding area exception process by and large reduced the need to make interim changes. But interim changes in the past are really always for map purposes. The color on the map wasn't right to get a project funded or something as trivial as that. Interim changes can be made for the policies, the written policies of the plan. And as we all know, there's a lot that has changed in our world since we submitted this plan in the twenty eighteen session. So by just changing the dates to twenty-one, twenty twenty-six, if there was some type of way to change the ability of interim changes so that O P M could actually initiate the process working with the committee to say, we are looking to tackle the state plan policies on X topic, whatever that might be. Um, we would be able to work in concert with you and any other stakeholders who you felt necessary to make a recommendation on how the state plan policy should be revised on an interim basis. Ultimately, it would require the committee's approval, which is already provided in statute, and that's in sixteen A dash thirty-two B. So I just want to remind everyone that the interim change process would still exist. It could be used in a way that we haven't used it before and to address Representative um Rojas's concern of how to keep this plan And to address Representative Rojas's concern of how to keep this plan from being a static plan, but to make it more robust. And responsive to the needs in each, as issues come up throughout each year in between the five year revision cycle. So we throw that out there as. You know, again, not that there's a need for any change in statute, but that if we can use the existing tools in a different way. I think there might be ways to address some of the concerns that might be raised here and in other public comments that you receive. Finally, the last slide just includes contact information as well as links. To our website. So if you want to just hit up the last slide and then that concludes our presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Morley and all of you at OPM for walking us through the presentation and I'm going to. Go to questions, Rep. Kupiel. We also have a few people who would like to speak and testify today. I believe if Mr. Lindquist, if you're able to. Stop sharing with that. There you go. Perfect timing. Representative Kupiel.
Hi, thanks very much for that presentation. I've been following along with the state's plans and also. From the cog level, working on the regional plan, had been involved with our local plan. I would say with the priority funding areas, we've been very successful on the local level. With abatements and tying them specifically to some of our quote development focus areas. And I think that carrot. Definitely has been able to stimulate the community or some investment dollars in back into the community. And from a state level, looking at the state plan, I think trying to make sure we have that coordination from local to state. Determining those areas needs to be, I guess, tightened up and then also looking at the timelines between local. To state plan as well. You know, the the fact that every town has a different timeline for their P O C D creates a little bit of, I guess. Lapse in understanding where the priorities really do fall. So it might be a good conversation at some point to talk about those timelines. And and how they actually fall in comparison to the state plan.
Thank you for that, Representative Kupiel. Are there other questions or comments from? Members of the committee before we go to air. There are three folks who have joined us today who would like to speak.
We do have an order, just. Chris, if you can just check on that. John was first.
So I just wanted to give a pause. It looks like when we certainly can come back to the committee for further questions or comments. And Mr. Clerk, have our. Are they, are they all able to join? If you can admit all three of those folks into.
Absolutely.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Johnson here, Patrice is in here and I think we're just waiting on Emily.
I see Emeline is, Ms. Harrigan is in Zoom as well.
Oh.
Okay, so with that, I am going to first turn it over to Mr. Wiskowski. If you could turn kindly turn your camera on. There you are and please proceed, sir.
Um, thank you, Chairman. Senator Casano, co-chair, members of the continuing committee. Thank you very much for. Receiving our comments. My name is John Wiskowski. I am a planner with C H A companies and represent. The Connecticut chapter of the American Planning Association. We submitted some written testimony on the draft 2018, 2023 state plan for conservation and development. And and our our general comments is that this is well overdue. We're, you know, we're basically now in year four of a five year plan. And and as drafted, the plan does make some incremental improvements to. The prior plans that that expired in 2018 and particularly as Mr. Lindquist pointed out. The refinement of the G I S layer is is a great step forward. But beyond that, this plan is largely unchanged and I think Mr. Morley kind of discussed that. The the. Growth management principles are essentially unchanged from several plans back. And at at this point, our. Our belief is on behalf again of the Connecticut planners that we should just. Get this thing approved and get started on updating a new plan because there are a number of issues. Since the original drafting of this one, I think back in, you know, 2016, 2017. A a large number of things have happened that really should be incorporated into a new planning process. Including some of the social equity issues, more recognition about housing inequity. Climate change adaptation and resilience. Certainly, the the governor's council on climate change. Had a lot of work that that really needs to be incorporated into a new plan. And and just a more inclusive process in 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 pulling all the stakeholders together. So our our testimony here is. It's it's a it's a fine job for a plan, but it's well overdue for adoption. We should adopt it. Move on and 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 focus on focus on the next plan at this point. So. That's what we have to say and thank you very much for the time.
Thank you for joining us today. Are there questions? For Mr. Wiskowski? Senator Casano? Senator Casano, you are muted. You are now unmuted. Nope, you were unmuted.
Unmuted, yeah.
There you are. We can hear you now.
John, one of the frustrations we've gone on this, go through this in the past as well. An awful lot of people work very hard to do this plan, make it work. Make it effective. And it's it's we're in what the third year, the thing is almost expired and it's not approved yet. Extremely frustrating. Does it make sense to stretch this out to a 10 year period? Or are we just going to see the same thing stretched out? I mean, we're we're about to renew a plan that's about to expire. And it's just. It just is terrible, bad government. And it bothers me that we we have to go through this and it really bothers me for all of the people that spent so many hours in putting this together. It just seems unfair.
This is, it's a very good question. And you kind of have to, you know, obviously, as you know, with your experience in municipal government. That municipalities are responsible for a 10 year plan. And and you have to sort of strike the balance between. Having a plan that is needs to be so long term that that. You lose the you lose the flexibility or or ability to be nimble and 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 adapt to changing conditions. Although it seems lately that that even a five year plan is way too long because so much has happened in the last five years. But, you know, that's that's, I think there are pluses and minuses to both. I guess what I would. Recommend or argue for is that there is some component of detail. Added to implementation of the plan, that there be that that you work with different commissions and state agencies. On implementation so that there is something of a, you know, a one, a three and a five year window of action items. So that it's a little bit more easy to track progress. And I mean, you know, the the growth management principles are good and I think they they're generally acceptable, but they're also extraordinarily broad and. And, you know, as being as broad as they are, they've been basically exactly the same for 15 years. So. Some specificity in terms of implementation. Again, on those shorter timeframes, I think would do a lot to keep the plan more relevant. As as we as we tried to. Make it happen, you know, it's a vision document, but we need, we need to make it happen.
Thank you, Senator Casano. I like that, Mr. Wiskowski. It's a vision document, but we need to make it happen. That's well put. Representative Lamar. It's great to hear.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair McCarthy Vehi. John's answer was essentially my question. When he said, how do you turn this into a vision, a vision document to an action document is sort of what I wanted to. Double down on a little bit, which was. Looking at other states, you know, not all states have a plan of conservation development. Many states have something somewhat similar to it though. And they operate under either two year, five year or 10 year increments. And essentially, our two year budget is essentially a two year plan of conservation and development, frankly. Where we determine what our priorities are and how we want to invest. The five year window seems difficult to accommodate because. It's so short term in nature that you're busy. Sort of solving 187 different concerns rather than focusing on maybe the 10 or 20 that should govern how the state. Builds over the next 10 to 20 years. So my question, John, is is there another model somewhere in the country that you think would allow us to? Look into to to craft a more substantive. Actionable vision document that actually puts into place like more directive. Priority areas rather than the broad growth management areas which encompass every part of the state. So as to ensure that everyone feels like they're part of it rather than focus our priorities and. Specific area. I think my question is more to what your answer just was. Is there another model that can make this a a action document rather than just a vision one?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question, Representative Lamar. And I I don't have, I don't have sort of a backlog of of other, you know, state examples. To give you, but the thing that I would note, I think, is. That that states that have been successful in in delivering on. Big picture. Visions and I'm thinking of and I'm thinking, you know, narrowly in in some of like the some of the smart growth. You know, and responsible growth of the last 20 years, states like Maryland and states like Oregon. I think were led more from the more from the top, where the the governor's office has really been the visionary. And setting the agenda and and really pushing that down through the agencies and and I don't know honestly if. If it took the time to be, you know, sort of codified or formalized into a a plan of conservation and development. Or it's, it was just about the, you know, the governor's office kind of setting these three, four, five priorities and saying, let's do this over the next. You know, essentially political term. So I don't, I don't know if that's a, that's a great answer, but I do think that that. A stronger hand from the executive branch and perhaps. You know, I don't know if the legislature is willing to to empower the plan to do that a little bit more to to actually. Influence state policy, state spending on a on a more. Formal or rigid way, you know, because I think that there's. As as we talked about during the locational guide map, being able to change these things so relatively easily makes the plan a little bit more. You know, it it doesn't really, it's not really a a plan plan. It's kind of a guideline for now. And and, you know, empowering this plan with a little bit more weight of of policy implementation, I think would be a way to to get there.
Great. I think and I think that was my read of it as well. And I think you and I had this conversation. A few years ago and and I think we both. Had this assignment that we gave ourselves to try and find another example. And I think we both reached the same conclusion that there. There really isn't much of an example anywhere other than strong gubernatorial leadership or in some states have been like. You know, speakers of the House who essentially they established this as their mantra of how they were going to determine development in their state. And used the concepts of a plan of conservation development without actually. Adopting one, they just essentially determined that priority areas would be established, growth would be. Focused in specific areas, investments would follow in those areas. But there hasn't been a a great guideline document that Connecticut could adopt. So I guess we're stuck doing the hard work still.
Well, if this this. If if I might, then this would actually be a good place to. Bang the drum for a state office of planning. And we have excellent planners at OPM. But I think as as was pointed out, it's a relatively small group. I think you probably have all of them on this call. And I can see every name. I don't think there's a second screen. And their job is primarily to write the plan. To to, you know, to write it and then at once it's written, you know, assuming it gets adopted to start writing the next one. And there's really not a ton of a time associated with tracking progress or to keeping. The, you know, the different agencies feet to the fire when it comes to implementation of these of these things. And a state office of planning that's irresponsible, not only for the development of the document, but the implementation of the document would be a pretty great step.
Great. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Representative Lamar. Are there other members of the committee who have questions for Mr. Wiskowski? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you for being here with us. I have a feeling we'll see you again in the coming days. And I see that Mr. Lindquist, did you want to make a comment before we go to Ms. Harrigan? It will be Ms. Harrigan followed by Ms. Gillespie. Mr. Lindquist.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut anyone off. I thought I thought we might have been at the end of the run there. I just wanted to carry along a message from the town of Hattam. They have requested a change from how the village priority funding area in Higginham is currently mapped. Their testimony was submitted. Last year, but as we know. The C and D plan did not move forward last year, but they, Bill Warner from from Hattam has asked. He's just sent me an email. He found out about the hearing today last minute and he has asked if the continuing committee would. Reconsider his testimony from last year on expanding that. Village party funding area in Higginham to encompass a school where they're looking to do a community sewer system or community septic system. I just wanted to pass that along from the town of Hattam.
Thank you, Mr. Lindquist. As you probably know, today is a hearing day as opposed to an acting day. But I appreciate you noting that for all of us as members of the committee. Thank you for that. Next up, we have Emeline Harrigan, also from the Connecticut chapter of the American Planning Association. Ms. Harrigan, welcome. Please proceed.
So much. Thank you so much, Representative McCarthy Vehi and Senator Casano. For allowing me the opportunity to speak. Again, I am the the co-chair of the Government Relations Committee for the Connecticut chapter of the American Planning Association. As well as the Assistant Planning Director for the town of Fairfield. It's hard, John is a hard act to follow. He kind of covered all of the points very succinctly. I do think that as a practicing municipal planner, I tend to agree that the. Very broad policy statements, especially in a in a more developed area of the state are are generally fairly. Easy to be consistent with in terms of of our plan. I do share his concerns that there are. Several items that haven't been included in this particular plan, given when it was initially. Formulated, reviewed by the COGS and then proposed for adoption. Climate change and resiliency is going to be a big portion of that. And certainly, there's been so much work done by both CIRCA. And other state agencies in regards to that and in terms of. You know, what the proper land use planning goals should be for the state moving forward. Particularly with, I think, certain typologies. For reinvesting in the corridors, which would be also consistent with some of the growth management principles. But it, you know, it really needs to be specifically addressed. I just wanted to also speak to, I think, Representative Lamar's comment about how do you make a state plan more robust? And I tend to agree in some of the other state areas, you do have a direct link to some of the capital improvement planning. That really kind of ties, you know, your dollars to your policies a little bit more specifically. I think. What the state plan does is it does that for the local municipalities, but it doesn't really provide equivalent teeth for either the regions or for. The state itself. So those are pretty much my comments. Again, John's a tough act to follow. He covers everything pretty thoroughly. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. I appreciate your comments and the time and. And it's nice to have you here as a co-chair and have you joining us for our hearings this year. Are there questions or comments for Ms. Harrigan from members of the committee? Seeing none, I do have one for you, Ms. Harrigan. I know that you're in the process, in terms of the local process. And, you know, what has it meant for you having this be up and, up in the air? Just on a practical level, wondering what the impact is locally?
I think, I think because, you know, again, I will, I will, I will reiterate, I think what Senator Casano said is that, you know, that, and I think staff members at OPM had said was, was that when the original really drastic update to the state plan of, of conservation and development happened, where they added the locational guide map, that was a really significant change, I think, to state policy and having those growth management principles be a guide. I, I do kind of confirm that this update was not as drastic as that last update. So I think for us here in Fairfield, as a first-rang suburb with a lot of pre-existing development areas, that, that having the new plan wait has been problematic because I think that there were some good policies that were added. But because the other plan was largely consistent with our growth development patterns, I, I don't see that for Fairfield there was a significant issue.
Thank you for that. It's, you know, helpful to see kind of where the rubber meets the road and, and hear about that. And it sounds like, right, for some towns that may have been more of an impact than others. Thank you very much for being with us today. Appreciate it. Seeing no other questions from members of the committee, we will go to our last speaker joining us today to testify, Patrice Gillespie. Welcome, and please proceed.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Patrice Gillespie. I'm self-educated about these matters, but I've been very active in my, my hometown of Wilton, developing plans of conservation and development twice, and also participating in the development of other towns' POCDs due to my, my day job, which I'm the municipal coordinator for the CT Energy Network. We are a group of groups. We're a coalition of energy task forces and sustainability teams across the state. And I just wanted to ask if my written testimony that I submitted this morning has been distributed to the committee, to the committee members in OPM? I hope so. I don't want to report, repeat any of that. But I did want to say that in the summer of 2017, I attended the West COG meeting at which OPM staffers presented this current draft. And I, I've come to really appreciate the readability and the formatting of the draft plan of, of the state POCD and all the information that it contains. But in my view, given what we know now about climate change and how severely it affects all Connecticut jurisdictions, there's really a need to incorporate very specific guidance around energy use. My point then and now is that, you know, nothing much happens without power. And clean power, clean transportation are the state's folk I now. Climate change is an acute concern. And local jurisdictions are where the work really gets implemented. New green infrastructure is needed everywhere and is being constructed now. And often, it's being done without good guidance from the state level on zoning rights and so on. So I'm, I'm afraid that if we don't have clearer guidelines for climate change mitigation, greenhouse gas emission reductions in a nice readable, referenceable document like the POCD, then some counterproductive policies are, will be kind of baked in to additional subsequent municipal governance and also maybe at the regional level. We, the municipalities need more than encouragement to develop robust POCDs. Most P&amp;Z commissioners and many town planners really don't have the subject matter expertise to incorporate state-of-the-art, energy-centric content. I've seen this firsthand, even in my own town, that hired a very competent and experienced consultant. So many people in the Connecticut Energy Network, you know, we are active participants in our respective POCD revision processes. In my town, for example, we lobbied hard for our POCD to address energy resilience, for example. Those words do now appear in our document, but, but most commissioners really don't know what it means and they don't know what needs to be done to implement such a thing. So I really had suggested a while ago, not knowing statute as well as I should have, that perhaps a seventh growth management principle needs to be allowed through statute, where specific guidelines around climate change could be done in the same succinct, readable, easily referenced format that the rest of the document has. So that was, that was one thing that I suggested in my written testimony. And I'll just close with the fact that I understand OPM, as wonderful as they are, you know, it's a small group with perhaps some limitations in the subject matter that pertains to this. So I, I know of 20 people right now who would volunteer to form a working group. I think the, the, this, the Continuing Committee, the GC3, Sustainable Connecticut, and the governor himself could request the formation of a working group that could develop content and maybe be infused into this 2018 to 2023 plan as a revision next year. So thank you very much for the opportunity to say all those words just now.
Thank you for joining us, Ms. Gillespie. And I will note to members, and we did, the clerk did just forward the testimony that you submitted to everyone. We will also be sure that information from today's hearing will be on the committee webpage. We'll work, our clerk, Camila Lemos, will make sure that the presentations and slides and the information is available also to members of the public. Are there questions from members for Ms. Gillespie? Seeing none, I'd like to offer any closing comments to OPM before we come back to the committee. Mr. Heft, would you like to say a word?
Thank you again. No, I'd just like to thank the committee for listening to the presentation again, getting some updates, those that provided input, you know, and questions. Obviously, we're here to answer anything further. Something should come up after, you know, the public hearing that you have further information that you're looking for. We're more than happy to assist and help move this forward.
Thank you so much, Mr. Heft. Thank you all for being here today. Further comments from members of the committee before we adjourn? Senator Austin?
I apologize, Madam Chair. And I'm just wondering if we could get the PowerPoint presentation, and that may have been said earlier, but if we could get that, that would be wonderful.
Yes, Senator Austin, I think what we, we may do is try and put things together. There were a number of different documents, so put them together into one email. I know some of them were sent out earlier, but if you're anything like me, the email inbox fills up very quickly. So that's why I will, we will resend those out and also be sure that they are available on the committee website for access for the public. There are other members of the committee. Representative Lamar?
Thank you. My question is just about what you envision the process being from here on out, in that this is largely a minor amendment to the plan of conservation and development, but we've struggled to get it over the, the finish line for the last few years. Certainly, when I was chair, we struggled at the last minute. And with the pandemic last year, we've had some struggles getting it to the end. Is there a timeline that you expect us to be able to consider this and advance to the floor of the House?
Representative Lamar, thank you very much for, for raising that. And I believe per the letter that was submitted from OPM to us, and Mr. Heft can correct me if I'm wrong. We, from 45 days of today's hearing, within 45 days after the completion of the hearing, the committee shall submit the plan with its recommendation for approval or disapproval to the General Assembly. And part of what's happened in the past, and you certainly can correct me, Representative Lamar, is that there's been some question as to whether the Continuing Committee or if the Planning and Development Committee would need a role. So today is the hearing. I think what we intended to do last year, and this was interrupted in the midst, the pandemic interrupted this. We had our hearing. The intention was to come back with this committee to take action for submission to the General Assembly. That would be my plan unless any of the attorneys, I do believe Mr. Tellarico was with us, or if anyone from OPM would deem otherwise, but we would come back, discuss, and act upon. And then that would go to the General Assembly as a whole. Anyone from OPM want to comment on that? I see Mr. Heft nodding. Would you like to weigh in on that, Mr. Heft?
Nope. That sounds like the appropriate process, you know? In the past, it's been, you know, a House joint resolution that gets done and then gets processed through. So I think you're accurate in the process steps.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Heft. And I'm sorry, Representative Lamar, was there anything further?
No, I think the only concern that we'd had in the past was the rule with respect to forwarding during a short session in that the rules, the joint rules stipulated that during a short session, only bills that originated from a standing committee could be considered. But during a long session, there isn't such a provision, I believe, in the joint rules. So during the long session, and, and this is, again, based upon three years ago, we tried this. During a long session, it's, it's more simple, or we can use this committee to forward it to the General Assembly. During a short session, we would have had to forward it to the Planning and Development Committee, and then from the Planning and Development Committee onto the General Assembly. I think that was the pickup, if I'm remembering correctly.
And just to be clear, in terms of clarifying the process, what I'm going to do is work with the folks from OPM, the folks from LCO, and the folks from our caucuses who have the joint rules, you know, under their belts very well. So just to make sure that we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's, and getting this one through this time. So thank you, Representative Lamar. Senator Wong?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just for a point of clarification, today's meeting was not a public hearing, and it's governed by a different rules and, and procedures. The testimony that we just got from the clerk, from the latest testimony, would we be able to get written testimony from the majority leader, who also offered his perspective as we, we had the deliberation?
Senator Wong, I can certainly ask the majority leader, as he is a member of the Continuing Committee. So I think his comments were only made as a member, but I'm certainly happy to ask him for, for written remarks.
No, if he's a member of the committee, I, I appreciate that clarification. I thought, I, I thought he was just making a presentation. That, that being said, then it follows up my second question. Will this meeting be afforded a transcript so that review of, of what was cited as consideration be public record?
So let me, just for a moment, if I may, we had some very last-minute appointments today to the committee. But just so that everyone knows and is on the same page. And Camilo, Mr. Lemos, our clerk, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we have on the committee Senator Needleman, Senator McCrory, Rep. Rojas, Rep. Lamar, Senator Austin, Rep. Cupio, Rep. Sulo, and myself and Senator Casano. I believe, Senator Wong, I, either you or Senator Champagne, I, I'm not certain of where we stand exactly. So one of the reasons we didn't want to act on anything today, one, to have time for folks to digest, but two, to make sure that we had all the right people appointed from various caucuses, because those are caucus appointments.
Thank you.
To the question of where this will be recorded, we have been recording this on YouTube. So this will be on the Planning and Development YouTube site. And Mr. Clerk, do you want to say anything further about that? I'm not certain about the transcript question. That's a good one.
As to the transcript, I'm not too certain. I'm, I know that Zoom does create an automatic transcript, but I'm not sure how they're released. I could check with IT to see if maybe we could release something for this meeting. But like Representative McCarthy-Vehe said, we'll have the entire YouTube link up of this meeting on the PND website. It'll be on the sub-page for the Continuing Legislative Committee for State Planning and Development. But it'll have the presentation from OPM. It'll have the YouTube link. It'll have all of the testimony that was submitted today from the three attendees and from all the information that we got back from OPM. And transmit a letter as well, which is just kind of telling us where in the joint rules is a requisite that we have a meeting, when it's supposed to be a meeting, and how often we're supposed to adopt the plan.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lemos. Mr. Tellarico, is there anything that you wanted to add in terms of process and rules? Not to put you on the spot, but I do that all the time, don't I?
No, it's okay. I'm hoping my, my microphone works, by the way. I know I've had issues with it in the past. No, I think you covered everything with, with the folks from OPM as far as next steps, what the statute says, the nature of today's proceedings as a public hearing. But yes, not a public hearing of the Joint Rules Committee on Planning and Development, but actually the Continuing Legislative one, the one that's set forth in statute. So, yep, everything's been covered, I think.
Great. Thank you so much. Senator Casano?
Yes, I, I would like to be sure that the comments by our last speaker, Ms. Gillespie, on climate change, I mean, at the national level, I think the governor as well, the private sector, I think the world is starting to recognize that it is an issue. And I don't know if we can get it included this late, but it clearly should be part of the, the plan and part of the process. And I'd like to see that, if we can do that, because it's, it needs to be addressed. And this is a good beginning to have it addressed here. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Casano. And to your point, my understanding of our conversation today would be that the, the request or the process in terms of our timing, given the 45-day timing and the fact that we don't want to miss the window, that, that would be in addition of another growth management principle, which would, which is, by the way, I agree with you 100%. If there was a higher percentage, I would agree, agree with you that way about how critical and important the issue is. I certainly have experienced it plenty here in real life, here in Fairfield. We've been underwater, both from coastal flooding, but also inland waterways in very significant ways with hundreds and hundreds of homes impacted. So, but I believe that that would need to be part of a broader conversation. I should also note that, and Senator Casano obviously is well aware of this for the other members, that the intent at tomorrow's Planning and Development Committee meeting is to raise a title regarding the plan of conservation and development so that we can address some of these questions related to the statutory dates and process. But I think there are some, some more short-term conversations and longer. And Senator Casano, I'd love to talk with you more about how we, how we get there, because I do agree with you.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions from members of the committee? Well, I want to say thank you to everyone here today. A special thanks to OPM for your persistence. I would say third time's a charm, but then we're past. I would say third time's a charm, but then we're past that. And then I also might be jinxing us. I just knocked on wood. I'm Irish. But we are, I think, we've, we've taken the steps necessary. So Continuing Committee members, please look out for another invitation. We're not going to wait 45 days. We're going to be doing it sooner than that. I'm aware that folks have committees and all that, but we will attempt in the coming weeks to gather again so that we can continue to move this process forward. With that, I believe we are able to adjourn. Thank you again to everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for your support today.
No problem. Shout out to the guys at OPM. They make great presentations every time.
Amen. Well, thank you. I'll see you on the next Zoom.
Ooh, fun. Bye.